Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, October 7th, 2024, 6:00 p.m., and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's website and YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Number reasons, sorry. Number one, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do, Lawless versus Town of Free Town. Two, executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement of media law to review for consideration of release of the executive session meeting minutes for the following executive session minutes. The dates are listed in Attachment A of the agenda. I don't think I need to read those out, do I? Item three, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, part-time human resources director. And four, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or lease or value of real estate, if the chair so declares, and I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes.
We're now in executive session. We're now back in open session. So I guess I will take care of item five, and then we might move some things out of order. But item five is discussion vote whether to release, partial release, or not release executive session minutes, listed in Attachment A, as presented to the board in executive session. So I will entertain a motion that we release as redacted based on our conversations in executive session. All of the dates, executive session minutes, listed in Attachment A.
Motion made.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll quickly get rid of this one, too. So item six is for the open session minutes from 9:30, 2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 9:30, 2024.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I'm gonna jump to item 14. So this is discussion and vote whether to approve the request for license or permit for an event from Patches Hill Farm on October 19th, 2024. I think we have some folks here from Patches Hill Farm. All their paperwork and everything's in? Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Remote control cars.
It looks cool. I read it today.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. This is the fourth annual, is that true?
So this is actually the, the, the fourth event that we've had, not the fourth annual.
Okay, I got you.
So yep, the fourth event that we've had.
Awesome. All right.
Yeah, have fun.
It was a great time in June, a good turnout from the local town, and we were happy to have everybody at the farm. So we appreciate the, the chance to have everybody out.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Perfect. All right, cool. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for a license or permit for an event at Patches Hill Farm on 10/19/2024.
Motion made.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Send some pictures.
We appreciate it absolutely.
Yeah, come by.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, so now we will move over and we'll go to item seven. This is a presentation from town clerk regarding the November 5th, 2024 state and general presidential election. Cheryl?
Good evening, thank you again for having me once again. For those folks at home, or those folks who don't know me, my name is Cheryl Estrela. I am the town clerk and the chief elections official. I'm here tonight to just do a small presentation on the upcoming state general and presidential election, kind of some tidbits for the community to know before you go. Oh, the lovely microphone, thank you, Paul. That's how I love this. All right, and then, Luanne, you were gonna have the first slide.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
It's giving me a hard time.
So I can keep going, but the 2024 state general election and presidential election is gonna take place on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Precincts 1, 2, and 3 will be voting at the elementary school utilizing the Memorial Drive entrance. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. There is no school on that day, so that's gonna be a benefit for us for parking and not having to worry about child pickup. We can go on to the next slide, please. Just wanted to let folks know that all of this information is posted on the dedicated webpage for our election, so freetownma.gov 2024 election. You could always email us, we have a dedicated email box with any questions regarding voter status, overseas or military voting. Our normal office hours are town hall hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:00, and Fridays, 8:00 to 12:00. I figured by having this up on the website and on the YouTube video, folks have our direct contact information there. You can go to the next slide, please. So we've got a couple of voter registration deadlines. So prior to the state general presidential election, we also have the fall town meeting. So the final voter registration for the special town meeting that's being held on Monday, October 21st, is gonna be this Friday. So this Friday, my office is open until 5:00 p.m. For any folks who have not yet registered to vote in Free Town, you don't have to register for the event, you have to register as a voter. So a lot of folks get confused on that. And then the deadline for final voter registration for the November election is gonna be 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 26th. Again, my office will be open until 5:00 p.m. That's a Saturday. That's also the same day, and the same day as the first day of in-person early voting, which will be taking place here at the police station. There's plenty of ways to register to vote, online or in person at our office, or online at votenma.com. Okay, so down to the nitty-gritty. So a couple of things I wanted to point out with this ballot, they're rather long ballots. So I have some sample, samples here of the ballots. Unfortunately, I'm not able to post those online yet because the specimen ballots for the annual town election, there was a write-in candidate who had adjusted the ballot, and it made it look like it was pre-printed with that person's name. So we had some issues at the election when folks were looking for that specific name and did not see it on the ballot. So there is specimen ballots that do come from the state that have the law and the penalties and the fines listed. We're still waiting from the state to get those. As soon as I get those, those will be up online. But anyway, two-sided ballots, pretty long ballot, there's two different styles of ballots because this is a state election, we have two different representative districts. So precincts 1 has their own ballot, and then precincts 2 and 3 share rep district. So we have to be certain that we're mailing out the right ballot, then we're giving our folks the right ballots. All right, so we can go on to the next slide. So what I wanted to, first thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that on this ballot, this is gonna be the first time that we're voting for the Bristol Plymouth Vocational School Committee. So just like our annual town election in April where we vote for the Lakeville representative as well as the Free Town representative, you're gonna have eight different candidates and races here where we have one person running for Free Town, but we vote in all eight cities and towns.
Okay.
So that's a change. That's gonna be coming on the ballot every two years, so every November. It's part of the agreement and the statewide law. So every two years, we'll have the eight positions, plus or minus, depending on who's on the district. So that's one change. The next thing I wanted to bring to your attention was our lovely information for voters' red books. So these are the bibles. Most folks will get these at, the state mailed them to everybody, they should've arrived in people's mailboxes the end of September, but this is our bible. So because there are five questions on the ballot this year, and we'll go into those in a little bit more detail, I strongly advise folks to read through this. If you don't have a copy of it, we have the digital copy on my elections page. I also did a Facebook post with a link. I sent copies to the library, and there's two over at the Council on Aging for folks to take a look at. And if they need extra copies, we can certainly print some out, and I do have some available in the office. We can go on to the next slide. So this is what I wanted to go over. So we have five questions on this very long ballot. So ballots are two-sided, the questions continue on the back. So the explanation of the question, again, questions are written in legalese, I like to call it, where yes vote means no, and a no vote means yes. So it's imperative that folks understand what they're voting for. Question one is gonna be in regards to the state auditor's authority to audit the legislature. Two is the elimination of MCAS as high school graduation requirement. Question three is gonna be the unionization of transportation network drivers, so your Uber and your Lyft drivers. Question four is limited legalization and regulations of certain natural psychedelic substances. And question five, the minimum wage for tipped workers. Once you read through the book and you read the pros and cons and people for proponents and opponents of the questions, you can go on to the next slide if you don't mind. The very last page, I wanna bring attention to folks at home, this is a very useful page. Folks can actually pre-complete their ballot, so they can add their little notes on how they're gonna answer the question, and then who they might wanna vote for as a candidate. And then they can actually bring this page with them to the election, whether it be in-person early voting, absentee voting at town hall, or the day of election. The only thing is, they cannot leave it in the booth. So we'll do constant sweeps if something's left accidentally behind, but I encourage folks at home and voters at home to please utilize this, it makes it much easier and much quicker when you're at the polls. And that goes with anything, just, question comes up a lot nowadays, folks can certainly use their cell phones at the polls in regards to keeping notes. They can't be speaking, or talking, or FaceTiming, or disrupting any other voters, but if they have to have notes, they can keep digital notes on their phones, and that is completely acceptable. We can move on to the next slide. Okay, so we've got some stats for you at the end, but I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate the vote-by-mail. So as of 2:30 this afternoon, was over 1,700 vote-by-mail ballots that we've mailed out to voters in Free Town. You're either gonna get a yellow or a white mailing envelope, there's no difference, it's whatever we had left in the office. We've also...
I like it. I like it.
We've also included pictures and directions and instructions. The instructions are always included, but no one reads, so we have nice, nifty little pictures, and I wanted to bring attention that this is what the absentee ballot envelope looks like. Your ballot, once you're completed, goes into this, it gets sealed, you must sign it. If it's not signed, it will get rejected, and if there's enough time between now and the election, we will mail you out a secondary ballot, but it has to be signed, that's state law. And from there, it goes into the interior white envelope, and then it gets sent to the town clerk's office. So they could either do it in person, mail it in, postage is prepaid, or you can utilize the drop box after hours. The one thing we want to definitely take note of is this cannot, these vote-by-mail ballots cannot be brought into the election at the polls or in-person early voting. In-person early voting with the Votes Act of 2022, that changed, that's now considered a polling location, so all rules, regulations, and laws apply to both, election day and in-person early voting. And we'll get on to that in a minute. The second half of that slide, we've been voting forever, we have directions everywhere, I have posters on the actual trifles and at the booths on voting day, but I wanted to reiterate, if you're voting for a candidate, to please, please, please fill in the oval. X's are not acceptable, check marks are not acceptable, the tabulators won't read those, and those get either counted as a blank, or they get segregated for a hand count. So please, please, please fill in the oval completely, no checks, check marks and no X's. We can go on to the next slide. Here we have a schedule for in-person early voting, that schedule is posted in all the municipal buildings and transfer station, it is also on the website. It runs for two weeks. There's gonna be no Sundays, it's gonna commence October 19th here at the police station from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. And then it's gonna continue on till Friday, November 1st. So again, here at the police station. No application is necessary with those. Some note before you go, information, voting in person, there's the dates, the polls are gonna open from 7:00 to 8:00, as I said. Locations 1, 2, and 3 will vote at the gymnasium over at the elementary school, there's no school on this day. I've also included the maps, tried to go for a color theme, I don't know if you guys have noticed over the past couple of years, red, white, and blue, right? So in that map, that's the voting precinct map. Area in pink or red is gonna be precinct 1, the area in white is precinct 2, and the area in blue is precinct 3. That map is located online, you can always call the office, you can check online, and that map is at the elections, whether it's in-person early voting or at the polls at the elementary school. We can go on to the next slide. I'm trying to run through this fast. So we expect a huge turnout and a huge, it's a very popular election, once every four years, it's for the presidential candidates, we expect a huge turnout. I just wanted to reiterate here, the Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations in regards to campaigning and the 150-foot buffer zone. Those of you have, who have been on the ballot before will notice at, usually at the elementary school, at the annual town election, you'll see my orange cones, and you'll see my 150-foot signs indicated, and that, that curve there in yellow on the right-hand side, that's the elementary school parking lot. But the 150-foot rule also applies to in-person early voting here at the police station, there's the 150-foot barrier there on the left. Cones will be posted and signs will be posted, but again, there is no electioneering. We'll have an advisory posted on my elections webpage on what exactly is electioneering or campaigning, what that constitutes, and what's included with that, but basically, that's the buffer zone, no, no endorsing, proponing, or campaigning for or against a person or question on the ballot.
And like, I made this mistake myself when I was running, the first time, I had my own name on my shirt, and I had to turn my shirt inside out to go.
Do we make you change your shirt?
Yeah. So just, so you can't wear any candidate.
So that's gonna be coming up on the next slide, I think I did mention that to Deb earlier today.
This one just, yeah.
Yeah.
You wouldn't think of some of this.
Yeah, so some of this stuff, so here's some images. This is all information that's gonna be, and candidates and/or questions that are on the ballot. So if anyone is wearing hat, a tie, a bumper sticker, a lapel pin, a button, a shirt, a jacket, a hat, anything pertaining, not necessarily limited to these logos, but I just wanted to give folks at home and yourselves an idea. So the first one is the logo for the Mass Fiscal Alliance, that's to do with question one in regards to auditing the state legislature. The second one, MTA, that's the Massachusetts Teachers Association. So they're proponents of the getting rid of MCAS, and which is question two on the ballot. So again, we may have folks coming in who may be campaigning outside that 150-foot line, none of that can come in. Uber and Lyft drivers, so we gotta be careful with folks parking in the parking lot within that 150-foot barrier. That's the third question. So the fourth picture there, you see a mushroom, that has to do with question four, psychedelic.
I have a t-shirt with mushroom. We are a type of a farming town, so they kinda grow naturally around there.
The state will send me guidance, which I'll try to put out and blast either on, or both, either on the Facebook, social media sites, and/or my elections page. So as slogans, logos, and things of that nature become associated with certain candidates and/or questions, we try to keep the community updated. The fifth one at the top, that last one on the top row, getting tipsy, that's in regards to tipped wage workers. So I'm hoping by bringing this out and to the public, folks will have a better understanding of what's allowed and what's not allowed. If you do come in with anything of that nature, you would be asked to either remove it, turn it around, as in Trevor's case, go to the bathroom, or zip up a sweatshirt or a jacket. On the bottom row, we all know the MAGA hats, but they've changed to blue, so they're not necessarily red anymore, those are other things that we have to look out for. The second picture, that's a picture of Taylor Swift as the childless cat lady. So that is associated with a candidate on the ballot.
Oh, God.
The third picture on the bottom row, that's Thrasher Magazine, so that is a skateboard magazine, we do have a candidate by the name of Thrasher on the ballot. So again, something to look out for.
I was curious about that one.
So these are all things that we have to keep our eyes peeled for, get the information out to the, to the residents. And then the last picture there, not to pick on one of the candidates there, but a lot of times we'll have mobile bulletin boards on the beds of trucks or on vehicles, those cannot be parked within the 150-foot barrier. So you'll be asked to move your vehicle, or cover up or remove the campaign paraphernalia if necessary, we're gonna put samples out, and then again, as we're reading information from the state, we'll get those up and put those on some Facebook posts just to make voters aware, because if you're not in it, you don't know.
Right, right.
So, and that's my goal, is just to get the information out there. Okay, so vote by mail. So the last day to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot is gonna be Tuesday, August 29th, that's exactly a week before the election. I hope that folks, what did I say, November? August. Sorry, I'm still in the state primary. Elections all year, October 29th, I do apologize. So we're asking folks to try to get it in before then, just to allow enough time for the U.S. Postal Office. They are, we're tagging everything, you might've seen my Facebook post with those green labels, trying to get it to move faster through the postal system, but we can't guarantee. And the last day to return a vote-by-mail ballot, if you're mailing the ballot, it needs to be postmarked by 5:00 p.m. on November 5th and received by 5:00 p.m. November 8th. So even though the election day has ended for most voters, it does not end for us as elections officials, that still continues for another 20 days before we can actually certify the vote. If you drop it off in person, that has to be either dropped off at the town clerk's office or in the white drop box in front of town hall by 8:00 p.m. on election day. So it's only if you're mailing in that it has to be postmarked and then received by the, please, please, please do not bring in your voted ballots to in-person early voting for the election. We have tons of folks come in, "Oh, I figured I was coming by, I'm just gonna bring in my vote-by-mail ballot." That can't happen, that has to actually go to the town clerk's office, we put it through the state system, and you'll see when you go online, Track My Ballot, that's how we input all that information to the state system, and we need to account for every single ballot that are at those polls. So please do not bring them to any polling location. We can move on to the next slide. Absentee voting with cause, Massachusetts Constitution allows for still absentee voting with cause, whether you're away from town on election day, a religious belief that makes you not available on election day, or a disability that prevents you from going to the polls. Applications are always required, whether you're doing a mail-in or an absentee, you can mail it in, or you could request a mail-in absentee ballot, or you can actually, because we do have the ballots, you can actually vote absentee at town hall. And during our normal business hours, the last day to apply for a mail-in absentee is gonna be the same day as a mail-in absentee. Tons of ways to vote, folks, tons of ways. And then military overseas ballots, they must be received by Friday, November 15th, that's another deadline, so those are all our EuroCava voters. And that's pretty much it on that, we can continue. So some stats for today, as of today, at about 2:30, we mailed out 1,711, and we've received in 55. That's not including the absentee ballots, we expect those to, those numbers to increase.
That's bizarre, precinct 1 has just, like, relatively the same amount of sent out precinct ones.
So I'll tell you how it works. So I like to work in order, precinct 1, 2, and 3, so 1 was out the door, as soon as those, that precinct was done and stuffed, it was out the door, so it kinda made it almost like a day earlier than precinct 2 and 3. And then, because it is in precinct 1 and town hall is in precinct 1, we get tons of those dropped right now, white drop boxes.
Right, right.
So it's always, always, I've switched it up before, but it always ends up, precinct 1 ends up getting it right to me.
Yep.
So that's where you see that discrepancy there.
Makes sense.
Usually 2 and 3 will outshine precincts 1 by the end.
Yeah.
And then, as I alluded to before, so we're in the digital age, you can do almost anything online, you wanna register to vote, you wanna track your ballot, the Secretary of State's site, secretary.state.ma.us, you can check your voter registration status, you can change your party affiliation, you can check what precinct you're in, you can actually check and track where your ballot is in the system. So has the town clerk received your application? Has it been processed? Has your, has your ballot been mailed out to you yet? Has a town clerk received your ballot? So that's all done through our office, my office. So we encourage folks to please use the tools that are available to them 24/7 in the palm of their hand on their cell phones, they can, although we'd like speaking to all of our residents and all of our voters, if you want the information quickly, not have to wait for our next business day, you can utilize the websites. And then, ooh, we went blank. I think it's just closing now. Yeah, that's pretty much it. It's just, just our phone number and extension, if you need to contact us directly. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one for you, Cheryl.
Yes.
My, my only question for you was, is you were, you were talking about when people mail their ballots back in and say it wasn't signed, it would be rejected, we would then send them another ballot. Will we, is there a way to explain to them what they did wrong the first time around?
Yep, so it's a two, it's a two-step process, so we have to send them a notification, a letter, or I have little buck slips that we pre-fill out for them, and send them saying, "We received your ballot, your ballot's been rejected for the following reason." And then normally, we'll take a photocopy, if it's, most of the time, it's because they omitted the signature, we'll let them know, "Hey, make sure that you sign it," we'll highlight it. In most cases, though, they're going to receive the second ballot before they receive that letter, because again, those ballots get tagged with that green, with that green tag on those trays to expedite it through the postal system. So in most times, they'll receive their ballot before they receive the letter, and not understand why they're receiving a second ballot. So it's not because, "Oh, look, they're sending me two ballots." No, it's, because the letters have to go standard mail through the postal system, and those ballots get expedited. So that's a great question, thank you.
Now, is it safe to assume if I receive a second ballot, my first ballot's been voided for some reason?
Yes, you should receive notice, and then...
No, no, before the notice comes out, is it safe to assume that since I received the second one, so I trigger my, like, oh, something went wrong, right?
So there's, there's steps and processes that we have to complete in the state system, so it wouldn't even allow me to send you a second ballot without a designation of what happened on the first, so it's not like there could be a duplication of any. And then we also do daily audits, because some folks, again, some of these applications that, those postcards were received or sent out by the Secretary of State's office back in January, and they don't remember if they filled out a postcard, but they're at their, they're talking to, you know, they're out on the weekend talking to their friends, "Hey, I sent in a vote-by-mail application to my local elections office." So they'll go, they'll download an actual paper application, and then we submit that. So not remembering that nine, 10 months ago, they've already sent me the postcard. Again, you can always do the vote in ma.com, if you do receive that secondary application, we compare it to the first, we'll make sure there's no change, make sure there's not a mail-to address. We have a lot of folks who moved down to Florida and are snowbirds, or have updated the address, or going to a different address temporarily, we'll compare those. If it's an update, we'll update the system, if it's a duplicate, it gets saved and marked as duplicate, but you will not get a second ballot in error.
Okay. Now, in your opinion, looking at national temperature, how's, how's everything been? I know we get our share of colorful emails and voicemails and high fives or high hellos while you're driving by, how has it been with elections? I know, again, elections have been a little contentious over the years, how's it been in your office? Everything, everybody holding up all right?
Everyone, everyone is holding up okay. I will, I will be quite honest, the temperature nationally, it's something that's on the forefront of your mind. We've all seen the national news where vote-by-mail ballots have been laced with fentanyl or some type of powder, that's always a huge concern in my office, it's a scary thing.
Yeah.
It's a scary thing. Also, the temperature of voters coming in who just wanna talk about the ballot, or talk about the candidates, we're a nonpartisan office, I have signs posted outside my window. And again, election day, I'm concerned and I'm leery and weary, just for the sheer volume, just for the sheer volume of attendance on election day, people's feelings, and how they interact maybe with a larger crowd, those are all things that we, we are thinking about, we're planning for, we're, we've done tons of trainings with the state, I'm actually going, the city of Taunton has received a grant from Homeland Security, and they're doing an election day frontline worker training with the FBI, so I'll be attending that with my election workers just to, you know, get prepared, get prepared. But, you know, it's a good question, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I think that kinda leads into our next agenda item. You guys are ready to move on?
Yes.
Because next, agenda item 8 is discussion, possible vote, taking the board of selectmen to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one at every policing, every polling location. And designate a police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to schedule and availability in consultation with town clerk for the, for the November 5th, 2024 state general and presidential election. So I think we obviously need some police presence there. We usually do, right, obviously? I don't know, Chief, you wanna speak to this at all?
Yes. So in past elections, normally we have an officer assigned within the polling area. And that officer's assigned to basically not only keep the peace and keep things orderly, but the integrity of the voting process. So that officer is handling the keys. Nothing gets opened without, you know, authorization from the clerk workers there. Everything is documented and, yeah, so it's, it's, it's an assignment that's needed. So going forth with this upcoming election, I definitely agree with the town clerk that having extra presence outside of the polling area just to be able to monitor and see what's going on throughout the, the election process is definitely gonna be wise. Our day shift is staffed a little heavier with personnel and I would be able to readjust things if need be by pulling officers off the day shift. The evening shift, depending on what is observed during the evening hours, I might have to call in a second body to deal with the, the parking area. I think going forward, just be wise to have an officer within the polling area and one officer outside and be able to readjust or pivot depending on what's going on with the activity during, during the election.
I, I agree with that statement as well as having the cruiser out there. In the past, right, we've had the officers out there, the cruisers out there. It just kinda gives people that idea like, "Oh, yeah, they're here. There's a presence." More than the body is also the vehicle there, right? And that's, I don't think would be a big deal, right? I'm assuming to have the, the crew, the, the officer out front with the cruiser. I mean, I mean, you tell me I'm crazy, I, you know, I believe you, but I just think that having that cruiser out there was a, a nice feeling in past elections, that people could see it, the officer standing on the side of the cruiser, so.
I think past years, we've been very fortunate. The townspeople and everybody's been civil and the people that are holding picket signs that are outside, you know, past the 150 have been very cooperative. Okay? So that really helps. But we're dealing with an unknown coming up here, right? We were just talking about the temperature of this election process. I'd be, it'd be unwise for me not to consider otherwise. That's something unsafe could happen. But we're in a position, we're prepared, we're talking about this amongst the other officers in the department. We're not taking this thing lightly. We're gonna be available when the need arises.
Thank you, Chief.
And the chief has been wonderful to work with. We've had some conversations and ideas thrown back and forth for preparation on this. And I just wanna make note, so the officer that is indoors at the polling location, that is required by Mass General Law. That is, as Chief stated, he holds the keys. So that would, if there was to be an issue, it's not like we could call that officer out of the polling location. That officer has to be stationed within the polling location. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
So what do we think the vote actually needs to be here? I think we all agree, you know, more than, you know, more than one officer, just for that reason you just stated, Cheryl. But, I mean, obviously, I think we kinda leave that to discretion.
I was gonna say, you wanna vote for, I think you wanna vote to have two and then more if at the discretion of the chief.
Yeah, so I guess, not less than two is what I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fire up the helicopter if you have to, Chief.
Might come to, to be someday, I guess, right?
All right, so I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve no less than two police officers to be located at the, at the polling stations with, you know, and with the discretion to the, discretion to the police chief for any additional officers for the, for the November 5th, 2024 state general and presidential election.
In combination with the town clerk.
Yeah.
I would give so that way, she has the authority to work with him.
In combination, yeah, yeah. With direction and consultation of the town clerk.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
And Cheryl, if you do, of course, you know, if you do get any, anything that we, that Chief needs to know about, please communicate directly with him as far as anything, send the area.
Absolutely.
She will, and she does.
Yeah. Okay, so agenda item 9, discussion and vote whether adopt the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 state election and director of town clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Freetown and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts, well, can't even say Massachusetts. All right. Yeah, so any issues, concerns?
No, this is pretty standard when we do every time.
Standard.
All right, great. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 state election and director of town clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Freetown and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda item 10. This is discussion and vote whether approve the request to charge cruiser fees for non-town police details. And Chief, thank you for providing that detail in the packet for this. This would just be kind of an additional fee that will be charged to those who do the detail. We're recharging an hourly fee to compensate for, you know, the fuel price and just the wear and tear on the vehicles. And Chief, you mentioned in, in information provided that, you know, most, almost all their towns do this.
That's correct. We've kinda polled the area departments and it's a flip of a coin. And the, the range of these fees have ranged from $10 an hour to $25 an hour. So we picked the middle being $15 an hour. Normally, our cruisers during daylight hours are not assigned to traffic duties. However, there are times where for safety reasons and lighting, if it's, you know, dark outside, we, you know, a cruiser is requested assigned. So some way of getting recompensated for the town's expenses of all the cruiser maintenance, this is a great way to get some more money back to the town so we can deal with that.
Because a lot of the money just goes directly to the officer right now, right? Is that kinda, is it like a pass-through?
Well, yes. There's a detail rate. However, there's a 10% administrative fee for the processing. And that goes, you know, taken care of that way.
Yeah.
But recently, we had, you know, we talked about cruisers and it's like, it's not just the amount of miles that been put on the cruisers. It's obviously the wear and tear, but the idling hours, right? So that was something else that's always brought to us. So this is a way to help recoup because it, even though it's sitting there idling, it's still putting wear and tear on the vehicle, right? So it's, yeah, I don't, I don't see this in, $15 an hour is not a lot of money to charge someone, you know? So I, I think this is more than fair and a great idea.
And just to verify, the money would be going directly back to the town and the general fund.
Yeah.
If anything, it's obviously more work for administration in, you know, verifying the hours that the cruiser was there and stuff. There's a lot of documentation that goes along with it. But I can see how it can definitely benefit the town and even the department in dealing with these expenses with the, with the cruiser maintenance fleet.
Makes sense to me.
Absolutely. I'm surprised we haven't thought of this earlier. So, good job, Chief.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll keep the chief things going. We're gonna circle back to 11 in a moment. So, but 10, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for the charged cruiser fees, $15 for non-town police details.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then this is agenda item 12. We're gonna come back to 11. 12 is discussion and vote whether approve the MOA between the Town of Freetown and the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority regarding the purchase of a drone for the, for emergency railroad incident response. And this thing looks pretty cool.
Does look pretty cool.
Drones are expensive.
Yeah, it's.
Are the MBTA's paying for?
So, yeah, a lot of work went into this. You know, of course, the needs have been asked to department heads, especially dealing with the railway and the MBTA of what resources we could use and benefit from. And one of the items that I thought would definitely be beneficial is something that we don't have. And this piece of technology is, it's new, it's up, upgoing. A lot of police departments have them. We're just, we're catching up with things. So being able to get this resource is definitely gonna help us out in the long term. If we recall, last year, we had a major save from an incident looking for a child. It was a drone that was used when we mutual aid from the Town of Dartmouth and literally saved the day. By getting a drone for our agency, the quicker response time is only gonna enhance the, you know, life-saving measures that need to be put out there, so. Yeah, so I've, I've done a lot of homework on this. I've even taken a course. I got my FAA pilot's license. And I'm working on getting two to four of the officers here on the department up and running to be able to operate this.
Is that available to a sit-in selectman as well? Is that something we can squeeze in there?
We're gonna be proud to show it off to the town, so you can definitely be there.
No, it's actually very unique looking at this drone. I see you have a payload system so you can drop off supplies in case of emergency. If they didn't see on there was, does this come with like infrared? Is that already a built-in feature that?
Yeah, so this specific drone not only has the, the zoom camera system and it does have the infrared. The other special device that mounts to the top of it is a spotlight slash speaker system. So actually, the operator of the drone can fly to a location, actually communicate with someone on the ground. So, yeah, there's a lot of potential there. And regarding the payload, the, the drone is big enough where it can carry an object up to five pounds. Now, whenever you carry an object, it affects the battery and all that other stuff. But it might be that life-saving device. It could be, you know, an EpiPen or Narcan or something small enough that you need to get to that location. So time will tell. When that need rises, we'll have that option to be able to do that.
So Chief, a couple of questions. Looking at the agreement, as far as public release, when you, I'm assuming this drone camera, right, has a recording capability for use for law enforcement, like court systems down the road. Now, do we as a town or police department own that footage? Or is that, because looking at the agreement from the MBTA, it, it talks about release of information. Now, how's that, how's that work out?
So all the recordings are part of the, you know, by the department, just like any type of evidence that we deal with going forward. So there'll be a strict policy on the use of the camera system and the recording devices and even public records requests, all that stuff. It's all designated through the, the policy and rules of evidence here at the department.
Now, is this strictly only used for MBTA use or can we use it towards like the woods or something, here in the state forest?
Uh, sky's the limit.
Sky's the limit.
So, you know, especially dealing with the railway, there's quite a bit of railway that's hard to get to because just long lengths of track that's in, in the, in the wooded area. So the MBTA, Mass Rail, Conrail definitely sees the potential of how that can definitely benefit them in case of that emergency disaster or anything that goes on. So, but going forward, just to be able to operate this drone, officers are gonna have to take it out like once or twice a month so they can get their flight time and training. Doesn't have to be long, half hour to 45 minutes, but they have to document their training, maintain their skill level. It's, it's a lot that goes into it. So in order to do that, we're gonna have to be, the more calls that we get, the more activity we push out there, the better the operators are gonna be, just not specifically for the railway.
Now, is that something that you can, I guess, coordinate with some of the local schools, school districts? Or if they have an event outside, maybe have the officer go out there, fly it over and obtain their hours at the same time? You're providing additional security for schools. Although it seems like you're getting your flight time, you're doing, you're doing both, right? So things along the, I mean, even baseball, football games, how about that?
Just thinking the same thing.
There's a festival coming along? There's a squirrely goat that comes out? You track that puppy down?
I, I will say this, the FAA rules and regulations are pretty strict. So flying over people, what could go wrong with that, right? So there's a lot of safety and evaluation that goes into these things. Not the thing that we can't have the drone on the outside of the event, but obviously you won't be flying over the, over people and potentially getting hurt. So, but the drone has so many different capabilities. We not, you know, an investment for a tether has not been made, but I can see in the future where you can attach a device to the, to the drones, called a tether. And basically, it's a cord that attaches to the tether and, uh, to the drone and it brings data and power to the drone. So you can keep the drone up there for like half a day if you wanted to. So if you have a large event that's going on for a long period of time, you could potentially keep the drone up there just to keep the surveillance going to monitor whether it's traffic or crowd control or whatever needs to be looked at. That's down the road, but it's just more technology that's available to us with the drone.
One quick question. So like, is there any kind of insurance or like during training, unfortunately, someone crashes the drone?
So just like any type of vehicle that we own here, I'm gonna have to approach the town and the town's insurance and get a bond to deal with. I don't know what the cost of that will be, but I'd like to think it's gonna be reasonable.
You read my mind because my question was gonna be in regards to insurance and maintenance. Maintenance on the equipment, is there, you know, gonna be some, I'm assuming it's not gonna be a ton of money, right? But like, is there a maintenance fee, an upkeep fee that we need to, you know?
So the first year of the drone is taken care of by the, by the plan with the, with the drone company. The following year, there is a maintenance plan, but it's pretty reasonable. From what I recall, it's something like maybe $600 for another year. Honestly, if it gets that bad, it's probably because it's crashed and which, I hope that doesn't happen, believe me.
So avoid that one for now.
So, but, yeah, routine maintenance between the blades, sometimes, you know, you hit things or if, you know, whatever. But, yeah, and then the drone company will do annually a maintenance run over. They'll take the drone, go through it, suit the nuts, and they get it back to you to have the peak performance that you need with the drone.
And I guess that's where my head is at, right? We don't wanna pull the thing out and find out it's not working, right? So we, whatever the maintenance agreement is, I wanna make sure that we follow through so that way we know that when your officers need that thing, it's there and it's working, you know? Seems pretty straightforward and silly, but I felt like I had to ask it, you know?
There's a lot of maintenance internally to be able to do inspections of the drone to make sure it's gonna be up once a month, it's gonna have to go through by an officer and has to be logged. Every time you have like a flight operation, there's a pre-check log that you have to do. You know, is the weather right, the temperature, you know, is the pilot in a good condition to be able to operate? All these checklists have to be complied with to prevent damages and injuries to, to people. So it's very involved. However, the reward in providing the extra level of safety is gonna benefit the town.
Oh, absolutely.
Chief, one question, last question, well, maybe if they have more questions. One question for me is, will this be part of your mutual aid package? Let's say a neighboring town requests backup or you can deploy this, this tool to help them out? Is that gonna be part of the MOA as well?
I believe that there's always a potential for mutual aid.
Okay.
I'm not inclined to have the drone part of the SEMLAC unit. The SEMLAC team has their own drone unit, number of departments that have drones and it's a bigger entity. But I think going forward, if we have an incident in the neighboring town and we have available officers, pilots, and observers, because it's a two-man team, to be able to operate the thing, we could be able to assist the neighboring town if they need that drone. Packing up two officers, grabbing the drone and going next door to the Town of Berkeley in 15 minutes could be very beneficial. But on the same note, I'm probably not so inclined to like calling people in overtime because it can get very expensive and going forward with that. It has to be a balance, this is going forward.
I agree.
All right.
Yeah, no, all positive stuff. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate that.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOA between Town of Freetown and Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority regarding the purchase of a drone for emergency railroad incident response.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then agenda item 13. Chief, you're still in the hot seat. This is discussion and vote on setting the Sonnet Bay Shore's speed limit.
So, so Trevor, real quick, and I don't wanna cut in on you, but we last time held off a vote on this because the chief was searching out some additional information on everything. We had some information that said we voted at town meeting to allow the board of selectmen to set the speed limit. And the chief was worried about that, so we said rather than doing something that would have to be rescinded or, you know, whatever, that we would hold off and wait and allow the chief to do some research into it before we made a decision. Just to give you a little background.
Background, yeah.
Uh, forgive me, I am not prepared with any additional information at this time. I've been kinda busy with other things, but.
I did, I did, I did the research on this, so I do have it. So, I did go back and look at the Mass General Law, Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, and it allows for the town to set a speed limit of twenty-five in a thickly settled area. It defines a thickly settled area as houses less than two hundred feet. And as we know, on the Bay Shores, most lots are a hundred by a hundred, so this would apply to the Sonnet Bay Shores. It doesn't, once, and it was voted at town meeting, so we can use that, and the selectmen can vote the speed limit at twenty-five.
Twenty-five is the lowest we could go?
Yep, yep. That's statutory. Section seventeen C reduces the statutory speed limit of thirty, which it currently is, per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. So, it does allow that. The only notification is once it's voted at town meeting, you have to notify Mass DOT that you have adopted this section. I do not believe that was done, but I asked Mike McQ to follow up and send the certified vote, so he'll be, and I had CC Cheryl on it to get the certified vote to the Mass DOT. So, because Mass DOT provided a list and we weren't on it as of yet, even though this was voted, I don't know, two thousand and sixteen. So, that will be taken care of, and you can absolutely vote to make the speed limit twenty-five. There's no, there's no variation in that. It has to be twenty-five.
It's funny, this morning, I had a sleeping baby in my car, so I was driving around the Bay Shores while he was sleeping. And I was like, kept checking, like, what's a, what do I think a reasonable, I thought it was twenty. Twenty seems like a reasonable speed limit on the Bay Shores for me. There's not a lot of space to go, you know? But twenty-five, that's as low as we can go. That makes sense to me.
I have done that drive myself, multiple times, and I use the Sonnet Bay Shores, and it was, you're right, twenty, twenty-five is a very good rate for that area.
And just like, I mean, Cheryl and I both live on the Bay Shores, and so does Debbie, and people do fly around there. And I was surprised when I found out there wasn't a speed limit, right? But, you know, maybe it never seemed to be required, right? But I think it makes sense, and then we can actually enforce people speeding. Right now, it's hard to enforce it. There's no actual speed limit. Okay, so I'll do the, and then I, I have one other question related to this I want to talk to you about. But so first, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to vote on setting the Bay, Sonnet Bay Shores speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, Chief, I recently, I forget where I was, but it was another kind of similar residential neighborhood, and they had like the speed bumps, like the rubber ones. Is that something like, like, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do here, if that's a solution. Just made me think like, do we know the process of, if we have a problem area putting speed bumps? It seems like, I'm sure it's not as easy as I was just making the decision to arbitrarily put a speed bump somewhere.
I personally don't know the process. What comes to mind is if you traveled up in the Avon area, when you go into John's Furniture, they have like those speed tables.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yep.
Right? And those definitely affect the traffic. You can't go over those too fast without hitting your head on the roof of your car. So, but I'm just thinking of sensibility and like the liability, you put those things out there. Is it gonna increase the potential chance of an accident, of someone getting injured? I don't know those answers, but maybe we should start like trying to enforce this, I guess.
Yeah, that's a great place to start, but I mean, because just, and this is obviously super familiar to me just because I walk my dog and my baby every day on the Bay Shores, and I, people like fly by, like happens to me every day, right? So, it's like, it's a, that one, I'm sure the problem's not specific to the Sonnet Bay Shores, right? I'm sure it's a lot of places, so like, this is just one, it's home for me.
So, so yes, and I think that, I know one of the things, Chief, was when we talked about the, the speed limit signs that we have, the digital ones, we have the ability to put up them just about anywhere. We just need the bracket, so.
There's one on Central, that's your road you live on, right? Yeah, there's one on Central I saw yesterday.
Yeah, I think, like, the last time I was in there, I remember seeing the sign board and I just checking.
I was there too, but this is like on a telephone pole. It's not, it's not like it's on yet, but I just noticed it for the first time yesterday.
Yeah, I guess I haven't driven further onto the island lately, so, so, you know, but I would think that us getting the word out there, because I don't think that, I think there's an issue, but I don't think it's the masses, right? I think there's probably some people who are doing it, and it's just like everything in life.
Crystal Springs is a lot of, like, they have, they own a property, and people like, there's no speed limit. They don't know, like, you know, they don't know, you know, so now we're gonna enforce it, and I think we take it on from there.
Yeah, no, so I think it's just bringing awareness.
Yeah. After the Causeway. After the Causeway. Which is, it's thirty, I think, all the way, Narrow's Road, right?
It's actually twenty-five. I had a, I had a map here last time. It's twenty-five all the way, and then right at like Causeway, it goes up to thirty. And then it drops back down to twenty-five. I mean, I think you could consistently put it at twenty-five, but my concern is, I don't, where it's defined thickly settled as houses have to be closer together than two hundred feet, there is that area there where they may or may not be.
For Crystal Springs, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that even right up on Causeway Road, right before you actually come through the Causeway, those houses are more than two hundred feet apart, so you couldn't, we couldn't even deem that.
I'm not sure who would challenge you, but I was just following the rule.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, Debbie. Thank you.
You know, getting back to those signs, we've had tremendous amount of success with those sign boards. It's collecting a lot of data. It's really helped out the public in educating where we've had complaints and we print the data, and we can see exactly what's going on, and it's all cloud-based. So, I can sit at my desk and pull up the data, you know, and see what's going on there at any given time. So, it's, and honestly, it might be something that we might wanna venture in buying a couple more of them because the requests keep coming in when they see these signs up there. And usually, it, you know, it can be positioned in a location for a couple weeks before we can take it down because we have to recharge the battery. But those residents that see it for a couple weeks and it disappears, they want it back because it really does affect traffic flow.
So, completely different side note, and I agree with that, is one thing that was said to me recently was, well, you put them up, but then you don't put what the speed limit is.
I was just gonna add that, actually, if there's a way to put what it is.
I would think that maybe if we could get something that says the speed limit, because in some places, we're putting it and we're putting it next to a speed limit sign, but other ones, it's not, so they pass by and they're doing forty, and they think they're okay because they think it's a forty-five, but they're really doing forty and a thirty. So, some of them, you do see the sign boards like that, and then right with them, they'll put up the sign below that says what the speed limit is, so that way they understand whether they're speeding or not.
There's a lot of abilities that we use with the sign, sign board, and usually what happens is when you're doing the speed limit, it's not flashing. It's a steady signage of what you're doing for a speed. If you go over a certain amount of speed, usually it's like five to ten miles an hour, it usually starts blinking at you. Then if you're doing like fifteen or twenty miles an hour, the speed limit, it's got like red and blue strobes on it, and it's taking your picture. Saying, hey, so we do get those images too, and, yeah, it's interesting to see those cars on our data.
We were able to purchase those with a grant that I got a few years ago, so I can look that same grant and see if it's available to get some more of those.
I will say, there is like a, now, everything has an expense, but to keep the cloud storage and being able to have that access, I think, I'll recall, but I believe it's like three thousand dollars a year. There's a fee per unit. So you get, say, three more, it's three more thousand dollars, you know what I mean, added to the annual fee.
But I think for public awareness and everything, that would be a wise nine thousand dollars. I don't wanna sit here and throw money on. I'm asking you about a six hundred dollar maintenance agreement on a drone. You know, but I mean, it's all about public awareness, and I think stuff like that, so.
All right.
Paul, hold on, Paul's got a question.
Oh, yeah.
So, on our website, we do have a location there of like radar requests. And between myself and there's another sergeant that's in charge of the devices, we're fielding these calls, whether it's emails or phone calls, and we push it out to those areas. But you'd be surprised between my emails blowing up, telephone calls, I leave messages, and usually I'm shooting an email to the sergeant. I'm like, hey, can you take care of this, please? And he does. He does a great job. Sergeant Drinkwade does an awesome job with it. But, yeah, the communication's flowing, and like I said, if the sign disappears, the residents want it back as soon as possible because it really does a great impact.
I remember you telling me that, how much people were saying, like, bring it back, please, you know? That's cool. It's good to hear.
All right, great. Okay, so now we're gonna move back to Agenda Item eleven. So this is discussion on the procedure for excluding town administrative buildings from definition of prohibited area as defined in Bill H. one, uh, four, one, three, nine. I think also Bill four, BH four, eight, eight, five. So this is a gun, a new gun safety law, a act modernizing firearm laws. So we actually reached out to our attorney about this, and per our counsel, this has to go procedurally in order to deem any building to be a, you know, excluded from the list of a, a protected bill, like a building that you can or cannot have guns in pretty much, has to be voted at, by the town at town meeting. So, just procedurally, I think that's really all this is to discuss. I know we had some inquiries on whether the town, the board can select which towns can and cannot. You know, we can exclude firearms from? I don't think we can, or, Simon, I don't think we can. Our attorneys have, we can't. I don't know, Debbie, have any thing you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, this is the law, the new law, and that was enacted, which I think is H. four, eight, eight, five, says that if you bring a gun into a prohibited area, you could be punished by a fine up to a thousand dollars or, and/or imprisonment for up to two and a half years. So, and then it goes on to define prohibited areas as any, any, pretty much any building, county and municipal government use for government administration, judicial or court, you know, correctional services. So any of our public buildings that the public attends would fall under this prohibitive area. And it goes on to say that municipalities can exempt their buildings from the statute. So when this came up, I did send the, the question to, because the way I read it is that it needed to go before a town meeting to exempt it from, from the statute that was enacted by the governor. And, and town council agreed with me that, in order to, you know, to exempt yourself from a state statute that the governor hasn't enacted, it needs to go before the vote of the legislative body, sub to the cheddar of the municipality. And he said that this local process is specifically referenced in this act, and then therefore a vote of town meeting will be required to exclude the town's administrative buildings from the definition of prohibited area, and a vote of the Board of Selectmen would not be sufficient. So that's procedurally, I believe. So, given the fact that town meeting has, the warrant has been closed, I think that the best way to move forward would be to petition Fall Town, I'm sorry, Spring Town Meeting.
Yep.
When, when did the town council give you that, render that decision? What date?
In the beginning of July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth. When was the, when was the request made by a towns person to put this on Selectmen's agenda? Was it made on or approximately around that date?
Yeah, probably. I would say if I sent the letter.
When did, when did the warrants, when were the warrants closed for the special town meeting?
I don't remember. Last meeting, probably.
And I brought this to light for the town administrator. I'm a little disappointed that this has been put off for months. And I understand it's a busy agenda, there's town business to take care of, but I happen to be, I happen to have business that I do in the town, for the town, in-town buildings. And while I may be considered a town employee, as a water commissioner, I'm not getting an hourly salary. I get a yearly, what I would call a stipend. And to have to give up my Second Amendment right to do charity work and sit in, and sit in the first office of that building knowing that there's no, there's no police protection in that building, that I understand.
First building?
In the, in the town hall. And, and so I'm sitting in that office, knowing that nobody in that building lawfully has a firearm if something, if some person with ill will were to walk into that building. It's a little disheartening that this was, the town was aware, and this has been put off. So now it's put off for six months, approximately. And I'm gonna have to make some personal decisions based on, you know, this, this being put off is a little off-putting to me. That's my person, that's me speaking as an individual. And I think anybody who comes, the problem with this, so it's, you know, it's on the record. The problem with this type of the statute is, schools are prohibited, federal buildings prohibited, party prohibited, courthouses are prohibited. There's already a long list of prohibited locations. Administrative building could be the highway department. The office in the highway department where decision, any decisions are made, that's town administration. It's a very, it's very gray, and the chief has the awkward position of how to enforce this and if to enforce this. I don't think he's, I don't think, knowing the chief for twenty-something years, I don't think he's gonna be actively pursuing people and adding them down. But, you know, if an incident were to occur, this then is out of the chief's hands and is in the, the district attorney's hands or the attorney general's hand. It may end up in the attorney general's desk because to set a precedent, set an example. So, again, I'm disappointed that this didn't come up sooner.
I just wanna say something. I did relay to you the information, right? I did tell you that, that, that it was gonna require.
And she told me the decision that was rendered by town council. But, you know, to, to put this off on the agenda and put it off, and I had expressed to the town, you know, let's, is, is, quite honestly, it's off-putting. And, you know, I can only, I can only voice, you know, how I feel and.
Well, no, we appreciate that.
I'll have to wait and make a decision, you know, make my personal decisions based on what goes forward. And also for the, for the, you know, notification of people may, may watch this video. This bill may go to a referendum on a statewide ballot because there is a petition that requires fifty-five thousand validated signatures. It's very active because this, you know, without speaking, without speaking to all of the individual, you know, aspects of this bill, which is a hundred, one hundred and sixteen pages long.
One hundred and twenty-nine, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two sentences that I tried to gouge my eyes out after I read it. A bunch of nonsense in that thing.
And reading through it is, is basically, is, I don't, personally, I don't see how this is gonna make, you know, this is, all this is gonna do is criminalize lawful behavior. I don't know if it's gonna make, make anybody safer, but that's, that's a personal opinion that I draw from the legislation. Everybody's entitled to gather what they gather.
Well, at the end of the day, it's, my question is this, it's Chief Rose, if you may. Yesterday, before the law was enacted, I had every right in the world under my license to carry Class A. What has changed today after this law has passed? What do I have to do as a citizen of this, of this great town of ours? What's, what's changed?
Well, since the law's enacted, I mean, if I physically observe somebody in here, I would be required to act on it. Now, I'd have some discretion on how I dealt with that, but even the law gave provisions of the individual to secure their firearm in their vehicle in a locked container before you come into a governmental building, which.
Which is ridiculous.
Look, I have my own opinion, but I don't wanna express that here, but this law did not do a lot of help for law enforcement. Just made our job a little bit more difficult and affect a lot of good citizens with their right to carry.
Yes.
One of the questions we also got since Massachusetts is a, like, for instance, we have a psychedelic question on the ballot this year regarding, you know, two ingredients or more psychedelics, and years before it was marijuana. One of the questions they got from residents were, hey, I have, I have a medical matter on the card. Can I not have a license to carry? Which was a fine line, right? You can't be under the influence while you're possessing a firearm. This law kinda scared them. This law kinda scared them, saying that they're gonna be looking at, potentially looking at registries or when you get your license scanned in a dispensary. Does this law change that?
Well, I don't wanna get into the weeds about that because.
There was a question I got, and I was like, I will ask it regardless.
I, I, yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those things, Second Amendment's there for a reason, right? We're, we all supporting the Constitution. This one's a little shit, it gets stretched out there as far as what they're looking for. And, and to his point, it's pretty, pretty broad, right? It's, what is an administrative building and, and, like, is this an administrative building they're in, the, the community room, or is it past the doors?
But I think, uh, we know the right direction here, right? And put it to the townspeople to make a decision.
Absolutely.
And, um, again, I wanna refrain my opinion about the matter, but we haven't had a governmental building issue up to this point. Would, why do we have to, you know?
Yeah.
Regulate that now, so.
Yep.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right. Uh, two, two points?
I just wanna, um, clarify or let it be known that even though it might've missed this fall town meeting, citizens petition with a minimum of two hundred certifiable signatures would call for a special town meeting on any subject within forty-five days. So.
Yep, that's, that's.
If that's another option, another avenue that might be of help, I can offer that.
Paul?
I have two questions. One is for Cheryl. How many for the annual town meeting? Ten?
Ten.
You know, as I look around the room here, I certainly feel that there's people in this room that have a license to carry. In Massachusetts, you don't have to carry it concealed, but most people carry it concealed, all right? And many people for years have carried a weapon for their own protection and protection of others. But when you look at this, well, first of all, I think the, the law itself is gonna be overturned when it gets to the state Supreme Court or definitely the federal Supreme Court. But it, even in, in this section here, it says, including in or upon any part of the building, the grounds or parking areas thereof. So it, this is insanity. You, you go into, you pull into the parking lot at the town hall and you go inside.
Yeah, technically, you're breaking the law. I, I get what you're saying.
You're subject to arrest. This is insane.
Yeah.
Okay?
I don't disagree with you, but we're not gonna sell that.
No, we, we agree.
I think there's a, there's an agreeance up, up at this table, Paul. I mean, it's, I, I'm, I'm with you. So.
All right. Appreciate it. Okay, so then we'll move on from this issue. Um, we already took care of agenda item fourteen, and agenda item fifteen is discussion regarding having a joint meeting with the Lakeville Select Board and Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Committee.
This is just to authorize me to reach out to the Lakeville Select Board to discuss having a joint meeting with them and with the Regional School District to start facilitating communication on possible changes to the district agreement.
Yep. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize, uh, town administrator to set up a meeting with the Lakeville Select Board and Freetown Lakeville Regional School, uh, District Committee to discuss, um, updates to the agreement.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item sixteen, this is discussion of vote.
We might wanna skip this one right now.
Okay, skipping sixteen, all right. All right, this is, uh, agenda item seventeen, for whether to declare the broken wooden cabinet in the town administrat, uh, administration office as surplus and send to the transportation. I was trying to figure, what, what one is this?
Underneath the window.
That's broken?
Underneath that window.
Yeah, what, that has like all the stuff on it?
Yes. You can't move it 'cause it falls apart.
It's falling apart.
Okay, is anyone, anyone married to that, uh?
Chuck it out the window if you have to.
You're not gonna be.
All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah.
To, um, declare the broken wooden cabinet in the town administration office as surplus and send to the transportation.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, agenda item eighteen, this is vote whether approve demolition of Forest South Main Street in Asona?
So we've had a lot of discussions and we've weighed all the legwork to do this, but I don't think we've officially voted to actually do it, but it's not been a secret. I mean, we've been working on this for some time.
It's gotta go.
It's condemned. It, it, you know, we, we need to take it down.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, it took thirty years, you know, five, ten thousand dollar fix thirty years ago compared to now, but it's, it's leading, it's, it's moving, folks. We, we, we love our his, our history, same time, it's, it's time to say goodbye. It's, it's.
It's a safety hazard and there's restrictions in place on the property, right?
Yeah.
So they, no one can just come in and put a new condo there or something, so it's, you know.
I, I was gonna ask that question, is there, is there any type of, um, you know, historical preservation type thing for anything that would go there then that would help aesthetically to the town to preserve some of the history and stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, right.
What we're, I mean, we're, we're looking at that law for ultimately, and this is down the line, is if there's a, if there is ever the sewer line, that we need that law for the pump station. So you would see a building there for the pump station that we are trying to simulate.
It will look like a historic building.
That being said, I have seen replicas, they do it in New York City where they make it look like something.
Inside might just be some.
Welcome to Disney, folks. Welcome to Disney.
The sewer line, and we're gonna need some substantial grant money, and given the, um, MBTA that we're gonna be possibly in violation of that, we might not get any grant money to do the sewer line, so that's why I say.
Yeah, this is potentially.
Doesn't mean it's gonna happen, that's sort of what we have been discussing, but regardless, the building needs to come down because it's in ill repair.
And it's just not safe right now.
Right.
Like, it's.
Standing water.
Like, it's only a matter of time till it, like.
It comes down. We're, we're worried, like, heavy snow days, like, a lot of snow comes down, we, we're, we've been lucky for the last few years that we've hadn't had much snow. Um, once those trees were removed, the real, the real look of the building kinda came to light, right? Um, it, you know, three, three to five feet standing water in, in the basement, right? It, it's eighty, what, eighty plus percent rotted away from termites and other animals and rodents, it's, it's a, listen, we love our history, at the same time, when it's knocked down, rebuilt, it's gonna look like it's, it's been there all its life. So that's the intent, and we're working with the historic, historic society and making sure that we're, everyone.
Working with the historical commission.
Commission, sorry, commission, making sure that everything's in line and we're not, you know, overstepping, working with them as a team, so, um, it's just unfortunately, it's part, it's part of the history, but it, it's that safety issue at this point, so.
All right, great, so, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve demolition of Forest South Main Street in Asona.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Definitely a viewing party if it comes down. I definitely wanna see that thing come down.
Yeah, yeah.
Just 'cause I'm a little kid at heart.
So, uh, agenda item nineteen, this is discussion of vote, ratify, uh, the chair's signature on the sales contract with specialty vehicles for the new emergency medical vehicles? This is the ambulance, right?
Yes.
All right, any questions or concerns there?
No.
No.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the chair's signature on the sales contract with specialty vehicles for the new emergency, uh, medical vehicle.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item twenty, so this is discussion of vote, what to do with the copper negatives and stamps as listed in attachment B, and this is an example of one of those school stamps. And, uh, I think, um, you hear a gentleman, sorry, to talk about this?
I'm, I'm here. My name is Robert Pilling, I'm with the Historical Society, and I've been doing the research on these, these plates. These are copper printing plates that were used in production of the nineteen oh-two history of Freetown.
Yeah.
Uh, I've done a little research as far as where they were generated from, and I went back and I found a book that we have at the library at, at our museum, and the Village Improvement Society of Asona was established in eighteen eighty-eight, and they were in existence through about nineteen oh-seven. And in their meeting, me, meeting minutes, I found, uh, a reference to questions about creating the Old Home Festival for the town. And there were talks in there, and they wanted it to go before a town meeting and have the town residents done. And working with Cheryl, we found that in March of nineteen oh-two, I've got a certified copy, thanks to Cheryl, of both the warrant and the outcome of the meeting. And there was an article made, passed, and the town agreed to create a committee, an executive committee for the Old Home Festival, and monies were assigned to them for their discretion. And if you open up that little green book that she's got to around page two hundred and fifty, at the back of the book, there's a whole section on the Old Home Festival. And in that, there's an excerpt where the subcommittee, the history committee for that festival, um, I can read it to you if you want. Yeah. Well, anyhow, in, in essence, what it was, they decided that it would be too intense to try to do it in a single day. So they created the writings for print for the book. So I, my assumption is then that this committee that was assigned and created under the town created the book, and the festival was held in June of two thousand, uh, nineteen oh-two. So what we're looking for is when they were found in the library, we were approached to see if we would take them into our collection. And at this point, it was discussion back and forth as to how it would come. And if some of it was on loan, and what we would prefer is an out and out, out and out donation, because we're gonna take them, we're gonna look at them. There's also four books that go along with it. Two of them are nineteen eighty, uh, eighteen ninety-five atlases of Bristol County, and then there's two books that identify the perimeters of the towns in this area. And those are gonna have to be preserved, we're gonna have to do some work on those to make sure that they're cleaned up, because the environment that they were being stored in is not conducive, i.e. the upstairs of Hathaway Library.
Girls, I'm sure, have good friends with.
They would be, as Nicole told me, she's a little leery about going up there.
Oh, yeah.
So she and I had gone up and looked at them, and like I say, I've, I've looked at them. I thought they were a different type of block at the first, but they are, the printing print.
Yeah.
That were used in the book to create it.
Yeah, that's.
So we would like to absorb them into our collection.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
For preservation.
I don't think we even knew that they were, uh, the property of the town until.
Well, this, this is, this is one of the, the points that was brought up, they didn't know who they belonged to.
Yeah.
So as the, the committee was created at a town meeting, it's a subcommittee thereof, so it's basically the town authorized the creation. So I'm, I'm going on the aspect that the town paid for these.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Even though it was a private organization that actually created the book.
Paul?
Yep.
The Board of Library trustees at our last meeting voted to ask the Board of Selectmen to be, to turn this over.
To the historical society.
Awesome. I was like, I was gonna ask you, because I'm like, Paul's here from the library.
Same thing, I was like, I'm gonna ask Paul, that it's getting voted on?
I've already, I've already spoken with him.
The other thing that.
He was at our last meeting.
So the thing that makes me happy to hear is when you talk about something in nineteen oh-two, that they're already talking about the history of the town to show you how, you know, much.
Right.
How much history is embedded into this town, so. And to your point is that, you know, it's not, this stuff's not gonna get in better condition.
No.
If it continues to sit at where it's at.
And the idea is that we can then take it and make a display out of it.
Yeah.
And it's available to the public.
Absolutely.
Yeah, really cool.
It is really cool. They're really cool.
It's a great condition as well.
And here's my next silly question.
They've been put away.
Do we need to do anything with a vote as far as, like, deeming them? Like, we just had to deem that thing surplus of an old cabinet, do we have to do anything with that to show any value? There's probably no doubt.
Email here, um, says it's up to the selectmen to give the items on behalf of the town to the Freetown Historical Society.
We'll just give them.
We'll just give them to them, okay? Yeah, no, I just didn't want to get caught up in some freezing legality.
Given away.
Yeah, what did they vote, yeah, exactly.
Donated to the Historical Society.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I'll be specific too, so, 'cause it's also inclusive, inclusive of the two books, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Four books.
I didn't know that, so is that in the email, because I don't know about the books?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's at the bottom.
There's two separate books, two copies of each book.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is Atlas, uh, Bristol County, and then Boundary Lines.
Correct.
Which makes a lot of sense, yeah.
To reach.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, um, that the town, uh, gives the, uh, Freetown Historical Society the seventy, uh, copper negatives and stamps, as well as the, uh, two books, four copies of those books, um, as I say, yeah, gives those to the Historical Society, sorry.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm losing it today.
No, we appreciate it.
Yeah, no, awesome.
You're doing what you guys are doing over there, it looks.
This is the fun stuff about.
Yeah.
Those are cool.
Yeah, that, I never knew these existed, so.
Yeah. They're gonna float around on the first floor for about two years.
Yeah, they have been.
Yeah.
Nice to see it finally have a home.
Yeah. And I think you can do a really cool display with those, like, you know, somewhere, that makes a lot of sense.
We've already discussed.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure, make sure this one goes with it, I don't wanna, you know.
I'll take that one back, I have to return it, 'cause, you know, I took that from the library today.
And if you haven't read that book, I understand that both, both the libraries of town have copies.
Yeah.
And if they don't.
The town clerk has a copy too.
The town clerk has a copy. We have copies, and I'll let it out. You can find it online.
It's really cool.
I'm gonna actually read it, I had to check it out in order to bring it here tonight for them to see it.
With the little label, I'm like, oh, she went to the library.
I wanted to be able to show them what it was that.
Make sure not to lay retard in that, uh, they do send letters home.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and, uh, move on now, I guess, to agenda twenty-one. We have ambulance abatements. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements at write-offs for September twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, agenda item twenty-two, discussion of vote whether approve the contract between the town of Freetown and Waste Zero for town trash bags.
So I'm just gonna give you a heads up, this is a horrific contract.
Yeah.
But I believe there's prior experience with this company in trying to get changes to the contract, um, and they basically say, take it or leave it, um, they're not gonna negotiate the contract. Uh, so I don't know what else to say about it, but it basically, I mean, it says in here that they're not even gonna warranty that you can, can use it as trash bags. So when I tell you it's horrifically, uh, horrific, it is, um, but I guess if you want trash bags, this is the only company that really makes these flex trash bags.
To any companies out there, there is a market to create a much better town label trash bag. Please, somebody do it.
It's amazing, they have them in openly, and that's what I want people to understand, right? Because everyone complains about the trash bags, and, and you know what some of it is, user error. I'm not gonna say it isn't, because I've done it, right? With you, how you pick it up, because they say, you know, you can't use it, you can't carry it by the strings. But there is definitely some issues with those bags. And it, good luck, because there's no one else that, that makes them.
I have tried at different levels to try to change these bags, from bags to stickers and everything else. So what the, what, what we're doing is this is an extension of the current contract for about, what, a year, right? And in that year, we're gonna be looking at different types of bags, from drawstrings to clear bags to different things. Every bag does not need to have a town seal on it, for instance, right? Does that cost more money? So we're looking at all the options to make sure that the quality of the bags is that of that you don't have to go buy a separate bag, like I do. I have a separate bag and I stuff it in that bag so that, that when I'm going down my long driveway, I don't have to pick up trash, right? So that's the, the thinking behind it, because we, because our limited, we have limited space in that landfill. We're looking at three to five years, folks, right? Three to five years of before we start after looking elsewhere for where we store our trash. By reducing the amount of bags, right, going into that landfill buys us more time. So thinking about it now for the long term is what we're doing this for. So for context and everything else, so.
But I think right now, unfortunately, we don't have much choice.
Yeah, for right now, at least for a year. Where's, those green bags, all right.
Even though we don't love the contract, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the town of Free Town and Waste Zero for trash bags.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then agenda item twenty-three, this is discussion of vote whether approve the lease between the town of Free Town and the James White Memorial Library?
This is what we've been working on for, I don't know how long now, but, um, because the library was in a trust and it's to be used only as a library building, we've had the benefit of using that building, I mean, and we, the town of Free Town, we've had the benefit of using that building, um, we have not paid.
One dollar.
The new lease agreement is one dollar, but, um, we have not paid for the building. We've paid for some nominal repairs, but the major repairs are done by the trust, trustees that manage the building. But their funds are getting limited, and as a town, as a municipality, we're not allowed to spend money on something that we don't have control over or own. So this lease, lease agreement is, again, no dollar, really, they're gonna, they're leasing it for a dollar. But if, if, if there's major repairs, the town will then take those on, and this will give us the ability to fix things, uh, because if the repair is too expensive, and in the lease it does say, like, we have to go to town meeting, obviously, we have to go for town meeting to have funding appropriated if there was something major that needed to be done to the building. So the town could say, no, they didn't want to spend the money, and the building would revert back to the trustees that own it.
Yeah, and it's our only library with running water, so I think that's important.
Yes, yeah, so this is sort of a win-win in that we get to keep it and use it as a continued library, and if there are repairs that are needed, right now, I mean, I think it's in fairly good working condition. It does not have hot water, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put something in to get a little bit of hot water.
Running water, I didn't say hot water.
No, it has run.
That's the other one, that's the other one, that's across town.
So now there is a toilet, and that is working, and, um, so this gives the town the ability to use town funds where their, the trust funds are very limited at this point.
All right, sounds great. Any questions or concerns?
No.
The only concern I have is when we take on the lease, now we do own, we essentially take over the cost and maintenance of the building. Any major projects that are on the to-do list? And I know the roof was done within recent time, the septic has been done. Hot water, simple enough, um, anything else major that, that we know going into it? You know, a dollar, a dollar a year is great, but now if we, we're hiring a hundred thousand dollar problem right off the rip. So anything that we know of today that needs to be replaced or fixed, updated in the near future, so we can, or.
There is nothing that I know of, I don't remember, um, I don't know if, I don't know who can speak to it, but I thought the building was built in maybe around nineteen forty-four. I don't know what upgrades have been, been done since then, but, um, as far as we know, just the hot water is the issue that I, I, you know, and I, this went to town meeting for a town meeting vote to, because of course we need to, we're leasing real property. The town, uh, agreed to, um, lease this building, and so in, in anticipation of being able to put this lease together, we did put some money aside to do the hot water in the budget, under our facilities, um, budget. So that should be taken care of. That's all I was aware of, because I did ask them when I was doing the budget how much they thought they might need for maintenance or things, and that's really the only thing, is hot water.
Hot water is important.
Yep.
So, no, that's great, I, we're big supporter, I'm, I'll speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure you all agree. We're big supporters of the library, they do a lot for the community, and so, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
And just so you know, it's a five-year lease, um, because, you know, we, we want to build a new building, hopefully eventually we can put that together. So it's a five-year lease that can be extended for three more five-year terms. So basically, you can lease it for twenty years, um, or you could get out after five years if we did in fact have a new building and we didn't have use for this building.
Okay.
So it's not a, you know, a twenty-year lease or anything like that.
That makes sense. All right, great, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease between the town of Free Town and the James White Memorial Library, Inc.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now I'll kick it over to personnel.
All right, light day for me today. Personnel board, item agenda twenty-four, acknowledge the resignation of the following two individuals. A, Brian Miller from the Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee, effective nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, on page seventy-six of our agenda. And B, Brianna Ferreira as signal operator, part-time, effective ten one, twenty twenty-four, page seventy-seven of our agenda. Thank you, Brian and Brianna, uh, for your service to our town. Item agenda twenty-six, rescind the appointment made on nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for Kelly Kamara as planning and land use admin. Thank you, Kelly, for applying and interviewing and selected, and, uh, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on the rescind? Yeah, we have to vote on twenty-six.
All right, I entertain the, oh, gosh, I lost my train of thought. I entertain the motion to rescind the appointment made on nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for Kelly Kamara as planning and land use admin.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so now I think we just need to sign. Do we know what guy that is?
What?
Do we know, do we know who that is?
He's on page one thirteen.
The bust, that little copper thing?
Yeah, I'll tell you in a minute.
It's pretty cool. Just want, want a really good condition.
Lieutenant George Winslow.
Been put away for. George Winslow.
When I was talking with Nicole, she said the best thing about it was the newspaper that they were wrapped in. She was reading the articles.
That's awesome.
George Winslow, it says it on the, each one. So somebody, yeah.
This one's just me? Down here, oh, sorry.
I've seen like stories where they have a big clam bake of what I think is on port of happiness. It'll take days for people to come for this, and it would be.
I know it's crazy to hear like, with town meetings and how they had to do it, because it was like.
It's awesome.
Also that, you see that like bar, the green, the green dragon? There was a bar that was like, at Asona Four Corners. That was. I don't know exactly where it is, but it's called the, the Green Dragon, and it's like, it's actually moved.
Thirty Elm Street, the goat farm. Where the goat farm?
Yes, we're the crazy goat people.
The information I heard.
That's mine, so no, I have, that's my word, so I have a poster.
Boy, I don't want to talk about.
Yeah, don't get me going on that.
No, 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 that's once, that's my recipe, that's my possible return service.
The Waste Zero contract, just Trevor or all?
Yeah, we don't want to talk about the train.
Shake your teeth.
Not.